Calling the monthly meeting of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board to Order at 6:01, actually, but it was 6:00 when I started talking. I'd like us to go around and do quick introductions, starting with Mr. Solon.
Tom Solon, school board member.
Cindy Van Connet, school board member.
Linda Sherwood, Director of Business Operations.
Lauren Duganero, Director of Student Services.
Gina Berksburg, Superintendent Elect.
Holly Durlow-Bappcock, Co-op School Board Chair.
Kate Stoll, Co-op Vice Chair.
Beth Williams, School Board.
Casey Lane, Assistant Principal of Student Services at the high school.
Patrick West, Principal at the middle school.
Thank you all for being here tonight. We have some absences. Rob Mann and Amy Kalner both have excused absences, if that's something. And Andy Corey, this would be his last official meeting, but he has other things that he needs to get done.
He's blowing us off.
And we, and Tim Grison is on a much-needed
And he's blowing us off, too.
trip with his family. So, but this is, this would be the last meeting for both of them as they are moving on to other things. I'm not going to say bigger and better things, just other things.
Goodbye, gentlemen.
Because nothing's better than us. No, I have a little goodbye for them, so, okay. Do you want me to do that now?
Well, I don't have any agenda adjustments.
Do we have any agenda adjustments? Does anybody?
So, then, we're going to correspond?
Do you have anything, or should I just go?
I don't have any nominations or resignations at this time.
Okay, so, just because both Tim and Andy are leaving the district, and both of them have been here a long time, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge them. It's a, with a very small token of the board's appreciation. I will say that the school board is not aware of doing this, so I'm not supposed to speak on behalf of the school board, but I kind of am. But I'm not, really, officially, but I kind of am. So, I believe that Tim began his career at Hollis Brookline, I think he began, I think this was, this was his first job. He has been a teacher for us, a coach, a department chair, an assistant principal, I'm sure other things, but that's what I could remember. He left for a little while, but then he came back to us and began his career as a principal at Hollis Brookline Middle School for two years, before moving on to the high school as our principal four years ago. The one thing about Tim is that he has always been about the kids. He cares deeply for his students and he focuses on them, and that is the reason that we chose this photo as a small token of our appreciation. I'll show it in a second. The photo is of our 2025 graduation, the moment that Tim announces that the grads have made it, and they toss their caps in celebration. It makes so much sense to send Tim off with this photo, as this is the group of kids that he came into the middle school to. He helped them through COVID, and he dedicated his talent and his time toward them. And he has been the only HB Co-op Principal that they have ever known. And they have been the only kids that he has been a principal for. So, just personally, I have a plaque in my house, I don't have a lot of those plaques, but I do have one that hangs, and it says, "Home is where your story begins." And I would like to edit that for Tim and say that HB is where his professional story begins. We will always hold a special place in our hearts for his time here with us, and we hope that he always keeps us in his heart as well. We wish Tim, you, all the best as you continue your story as an amazing educator. Your new district is lucky to have your dedication, your compassion, your sense of humor, and your commitment to your staff and students. And this is the photo. I will show it to all of you, the photo framed for him. I'm sure he will hang it happily in his new office, where his kids in his new school will say, "Those are not us." But maybe he will. There you go.
Can I pass it?
Yeah, you can pass it. I'm not thinking. Okay, so that's Tim. This one got a little negative, but that's okay. He's not here, so. So, Andy is also leaving us. As many of you know, Andy Corey has been our superintendent for 11 years. He came to the SAU 11 years ago. I think I'm remembering this correctly, but members on this school board have been with him the entire time. I didn't join until he had been here for a year or so. But if I recall correctly, the Hollis Brookline Co-op had just been embroiled in over a year's worth, or more than a year's worth of discussion, debate, heated debate, and division regarding the apportionment formula. And this was a really tough time. I did, I was a witness to all that as a member for our two communities. Frustrations were really high. And we did pass the formula before Andy came to us, I think, but he came into an environment like that, where there had been a lot of anger and a lot of frustration and a lot of discussion. And the thing is, I feel like Andy caught the sense of what we all needed pretty quickly. He methodically approached taking on an SAU with four boards, three districts, all in some form of discord at that time, six contracts, and six buildings and grounds. Slowly and steadily, he found his ways to bring our community together by being present in the community and by talking, and talking, and talking to community members, and parents, and staff, and students. His approach to budgeting and facilities, to his team and to his staff, has always been about taking time to build consensus, paying attention to the needs of his students, and always keeping the taxpayer in mind. So, in a small way, we felt like a photo that represented Andy's legacy of the district would be the most appropriate. And his legacy, to put it simply, is HB One Community. I believe this is the motto of our middle school. I believe it's on our thing, where the kids from our two districts join as one. Andy truly believes in Hollis Brookline, and he cares so deeply for our students, he wanted to make sure that all kids felt appreciated and every decision always came back to what was best for our kids. After our COVID year, we were able to gather in the fall for sporting events again, and we all remember, many of us remember, the first time that the bleachers were full at the turf field, kids cheering on kids, parents and community, community members watching and rooting for HB athletes. So, it just felt like the photo to remind Andy of his years at HB would be this drone shot of the turf field with our students on it. I believe, from what I can tell, the kids are gathering for some sort of photo, probably, a yearbook photo. It doesn't look like a practice to me, it looks like a mixture of kids. The turf field is a symbol of HB One Community and it's example of one of the most significant facility projects that Andy oversaw. So, as Andy moves on to his retirement, his contributions to the Co-op will be felt for years to come. We will miss him, but we know that another legacy is the depth of the leaders that he has mentored, and he leaves us in very excellent hands. We wish him the very best in his future endeavors. And this is the photo of the turf field, drone shot. You can pass that to him. There you go. So, goodbye, and good luck. Well, I hope that they actually watch it, or maybe I will send these to them. I am kind of edited as I went along, but that's okay.
What you do is you tape it to the back.
Oh, that's a great idea. You guys are smarter than me. That's terrific, so. It's consensus building. Great. Okay, so are there any other correspondence, notifications, resignations? Nothing we need to know? Great. I need a process observer, a few, last year I tried to make a calendar, that doesn't really work, so is there anyone who'd like to do it?
Doctorate.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, approval of minutes, let me go to my outline. Kate, do you want to take that?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. All right, so we've got some minutes to approve from the May 21st meeting. We had, Beth, you were absent, but you know that you can still vote, it's up to you. You can also abstain, it's your decision. So, we have the following amendments were offered, page seven, line three, N should be in, page eight, line 31, replace full with fully, page 15, line two, replace or with four, page 21, line 29, start the sentence with capital with, page 23, line 13, replace he with she, and page 27, line 13, replace members, should be singular. So, I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Beth.
Second.
And a second by Kate, and I don't have a pen.
I do.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions or comments? Yes.
Can I take a minute to recognize Joe? This is his last meeting with us, and I would like to thank him
I didn't know that.
for all the times he's been here, every night.
Oh, I didn't know that. Oh, Joe, well, we will miss you. And I don't have to buy high shoes.
Saying so, Joe.
But, Joe, I don't have to buy high shoes anymore, so that...
They're still viable.
No, you should just take them all with you.
Let's not say I'm doable.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Joe, for your time. Okay, so I need a motion to accept as amended the minutes. You did, Beth and Kate. Okay, I need a vote on that, then. Is there any more comments on the minutes? All those in favor? And a no? Any no's? And abstentions? Okay, so five zero one, nope, four zero one, sorry. Got to watch my math, everyone. Motion carries. Okay, we have some non-public minutes with no amendments, so I need a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Kate.
Second.
Second by Beth. All those in favor? Opposed, and abstentions. Four zero one, motion carries. And then we had a second non-public, so I need a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Beth.
Second.
Second by Kate. All those in favor? Four, and abstentions, one, four zero one. Okay, so, moving forward, we have a public hearing on the expendable trust that's supposed to start at 6:15. Now, we'll be good, I think, we're pretty close. So, do we wait four minutes? There's nothing else to do.
We could do the athletics.
All right, let's do the athletics board report. So, we're going to move a little bit to the athletics board report, I need someone to do that. Patrick?
Yep. We had a pretty strong spring into middle schools, so fire away. Excited to announce that HB is home to three champion teams this spring. HBMS baseball team won their third tri-county championship in a row, which is really impressive when you think about it. HBMS boys outdoor track team won their second of back-to-back tri-county league meets champions, sorry, championship. And HBMS girls lacrosse team won tri-county Division One title in exciting fashion on the turf field. I believe this is the second championship since the inception of the program in 2019, when they won that championship. So, congratulations to all three teams, student athletes and coaches, on their tremendous success. Despite some challenging weather, weather patterns, which hopefully will change tomorrow, experiencing some majority of the spring season, high school athletics is quickly windows, sorry, is quickly windows down, thus marking
I think you meant winding down.
Winding down.
Yeah.
Thank you for reading Mr. Bumpus's words. Marking another successful year, several of our teams had fantastic seasons marked by championships. Boy tennis, who fell to a strong Goffstown squad in the finals, that's not a sore one there, and yet another finals appearance by the boys volleyball team, who will square off at Coground on Saturday, the 14th.
What happened?
They lost.
That's a bummer, I'm sorry.
In four sets.
Oh, in four sets, okay.
Awesome. In addition, the successes of the baseball, girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, and girls team each fell in the quarterfinal round of their respective tournaments. Outdoor track team is also competing with Sam Bruno, Grace Dow, Brady McCamick, each representing HB at the New England Champions last Saturday. I don't know how they did.
They had a strong showing, and Sam, I feel like, was fourth or seventh?
Yeah, I feel like it was on, but I can't know, I don't remember if it was the meet of champs or the New England's that he did so well, so, yeah, I can't remember. But congratulations to them.
Either way, making it to the New England Championships
Yeah, that's amazing.
is a big deal.
That's a big deal.
Looking forward to celebrating the accomplishments of all the teams at the end-of-the-year awards, which was Monday night. Middle school update, as I mentioned, three championships this spring. Boys lacrosse team also earned a spot in the tri-county tournament, falling to Londonderry. Girls outdoor track also had a strong showing in their league meet, earning a second-place finish. Looking forward to a fun-filled summer with several of our teams participating in open gyms and pick up before fall sports kickoff. A few thank-yous, the 24-25 athletics come to a close and start of the next year. It's just around the corner. The athletic department would like to extend its serious appreciation and gratitude to all those involved in our athletic program. Thank you all, coaches, parents, and student athletes, as well as the Booster Club for their sport dedication. Thank you to the Co-op School Board, as well as SAU and building level admin for their continued support, which allows us to grow, improve, and provide positive experiences for our students year in and year out. And then there are open coaching positions for next school year.
Thank you so much, Patrick, for going through that.
Of course.
And congratulations to all of those teams and athletes, and our powerhouse middle school baseball team, and all of those teams that won their championships, and those kids who made it to New England's, because it's a big deal. So, all of the kids, congratulations to all of them. So, thank you. All right. Moving forward, is there, are there any questions on the athletic report by the school board? No? Okay, great. Sounds like it was a successful spring, even with the bad weather. Because it's never going to stop raining.
Just so you know.
Know if it's ever going to stop raining. Okay, so at this point, we're going to move to our public hearing on the maintenance trust. So, I need a motion that the board recess until the conclusion of the public hearing on the, of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District Maintenance Expendable Trust.
So moved.
Moved by Beth.
Second.
Second by Kate. All those in favor? Five zero. So, we are recessing at exactly 6:15, and now we need to find the outline for the expendable trust. Which I should have. Shouldn't I have it outlined?
It's usually a separate outline.
It was...
I didn't print it, so.
And I didn't.
That's okay, I'll just pull it up. Just give me one second. Thank you, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great.
Do you want to go through it?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so every June, we look at our trusts, and here we are, June, taking a look at maintenance expendable trust. So, the background, our principals and our facilities department take a look at all of our repairs and improvements needed in both the middle school and the high school during the budgeting process. As we go through the months, we shift some items from the budget to the maintenance expendable trust. At the budget hearing for the FY26 budget, the Hollis Brookline Cooperative Budget Committee recommended, along with the school board, that the funding source for these particular items be the Hollis Brookline Maintenance Expendable Trust. So, item number one is FY25, requested item of the middle school final elevator expense of $5,820, and that is an expense in response to a final inspection of the upgraded elevator. FY26 requested items with estimated costs were Phase 10 of 10 of the high school roof section for $80,000, and Phase 2 of 3 of the high school elevator retrofit. So, if you recall, we were going to do this in three phases, so that by the time we complete Phase 3, we would have the money to actually do the retrofit of the elevator, so no work would be done, just simply set aside. And then Phase 1 of the middle school roof section for $150,000. So, the total requested dollars to be spent from the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District Maintenance Expendable Trust is $303,820. So, the current balance is $154,990. $300,000 is to be added in FY26, that's what the voters approved in March, and were able to do. The expenditures would total $303,820, leaving us with an available balance of roughly $151,170. I say roughly as those dollar amounts might be a little bit less than what we are requesting, but those are our best understanding at this time. So, that is the maintenance expendable trust, so we want to speak in favor or against it before we discuss the special interest.
Why don't we just talk about this, do the special interest, too, and then I'll just...
Too brief.
I didn't, I didn't think that we discussed it during the hearing. The hearing's mainly for the public, I thought.
We're not going to discuss it, but she was asking, should I open the public floor for this, then, then close it, then do that? So, we're going to just do them all together.
Okay.
Is that okay, Tom?
Yes, I approve.
Okay, good. Just checking.
So, this is really complicated, but for the Special Education Expendable Trust, there are no plans to use any money at this time. Our current balance is $290,153. We did not have an article to move any additional money to the Special Education Expendable Trust, giving us an anticipated balance of $290,153.
Okay, and just a question. I know that we have to keep public comment open for half an hour in a traditional meeting in a public hearing.
We do not.
Do not. So, we can open the floor? If there's no public comment, I can close the floor?
Correct.
Okay. So, at this point, I'm going to open the floor for public comment on the, on the Maintenance Expendable Trust and the Special Education Expendable Trust, but since that's not really part. And if you have a comment, you need to state your name and address for the record, be respectful, and at this particular moment, since we're in a public hearing, this is all that you can really talk about, are these trusts. So, is there anyone interested in making public comment on these particular items? Oh, I'm opening the floor, sorry, at 6:19.
You don't have to keep track of the time for this one, though?
I don't?
Because it's not a 30-minute one.
Okay, so seeing none? Seeing no comment, I'm going to close the floor at 6:19 as well. And I'm going to end the hearing, right?
Perfect.
That's how I do it, right? And then we're going to come out of recess. And I'm going to go back to my other agenda. Linda, thank you so much for saying you didn't even write on it, so it's nice to think.
No problem.
Okay, so, we are back into our regularly scheduled Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District meeting, and at this point, I'm going to open the floor for public input. And since we are doing this a smidge early, I'm going to leave the floor open until 7:00 PM. So, 7:05. And that way, that will follow the agenda. So, again, if people have comment on our regular agenda for tonight, this would be an opportunity for them to do so. They need to state their name and address for the record, and try to stick with the topics that we are kind of focused on, and this is not a time for back and forth, it's just simply a time for the board to hear your concerns or your comments. Is there anyone interested in making public comment? No? Okay. So, the floor will stay open until 7:05. All right, moving on. We are now at the principals' reports, and we will start with the HBMS greenhouse report, or do you, are we doing the greenhouse and the principals' report?
Yeah, the greenhouse is kind of just embedded as part of
Okay.
the principals' report. I can go through that very quickly, but I'll start with just my principals' report.
Perfect.
End-of-the-year celebrations this week went really well. We had our luau dance on Monday night for our eighth grade, which highlighted a slideshow from PTSA member and parent MJ Shapiro. Thank you so much to her for all of her work. It was a 25-minute slideshow, and students really enjoyed seeing it. We were hoping to send it out soon to families, but it's a, it's a really big video, so we're working through the technology piece. We had our award ceremony yesterday morning on the last day of school, recognized about a third of the school. It was a, it's a really nice tradition to have, to bring our students in, do our awards, see each class for about 10 minutes, and then send them off for the summer. Our spring concerts were last week, the 10th and the 11th. Both groups did a really nice job. I just wanted to give our new music teacher, who took over for Nancy Spencer, Alyssa Costa, a big shout-out, because she had 130 students in her chorus this year. And you can't see the full gym in that picture, but the gym was filled with families, and it was just a nice vibe that night. Also, thank you Liz Nault for her spring band concert, another great production by her and her group. Seventh grade science did a solar ovens project this year, and it was, no pun intended, or pun intended, tasty. They put s'mores, they made some ovens out of cardboard boxes, left them outside last week on a nice hot day, and got to eat the s'mores after they baked inside, and it was a fun end-of-the-year activity for all students. Greenhouse update, which is attached, again, I just want to give student services administrator Catherine Ransom, our seventh grade science teacher Claire Delay, Riccardi from Brookdale Fruit Farm, and the Rotary, Rotary Club a big shout-out for all their help this spring. There's a Rotary group coming in on Saturday to do a little bit more cleaning around the greenhouse. If you look at the attachment of the greenhouse updates, you can see how nice it is looking, but there's still some weeding and other things that the Rotary is going to come by on Saturday and lend an extra hand. But if you take a look at the greenhouse update, I know it's kind of a part of the board report, you can see all the great things that Ms. Delay and Ms. Elren are incorporating into their seventh, seventh grade science curriculum. Rock groups are going out there frequently, taking walks in the morning, and it's just been a really nice addition, or revamping back in the middle school. And part of her, Ms. Delay's projects is adding more flowers and pollinator plants to different gardens throughout the school. And I'm not sure if you guys noticed, right on the corner of the school, that's been an area where she's planted some different flowers and plants. So, it's been really nice to see her and her group. She's got about 20, 25 students in her greenhouse club, and I think those numbers will continue to rise.
Just 25 students in her greenhouse club?
Yes.
That's amazing.
Yes, where our first year, I think we had five.
I know, that's a lot of kids, though, that's awesome.
It is. I think that speaks to her connection that she makes with her students.
That's awesome.
She's been an absolute wonder, a wonderful addition to our building here in so many ways, and one of those, one of those is the greenhouse. Some end-of-the-year dates, and then some, crazy to think, beginning-of-the-year dates that I added there. And that's all I have for my board report. I'll put to any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question, Tom?
No. What, what happens with, at the greenhouse, with the greenhouse during the summer months?
Yep, thank you for asking that. Claire put together a calendar that she shared out with our staff, she shared with the Rotary, and I'll send it out to the community, I can send it to all of you, for people to sign up each day to come by and water and just maintain during the summer months.
Do they grow any produce?
Yep. One of the goals is next spring for us to bring in some of the produce to our cafeteria. I'm working with Amy Cassidy, and it's looking like we'll be able to offer some of the foods, cucumbers and veggies from the, from the greenhouse.
That's great. That is really great, and I'm so glad that that's back up and running, and so grateful to the community members and the staff members who are doing that, because it's really great. And the ovens project sounds cool, too.
What's powered by the solar?
I haven't gotten necessarily an answer on that. I think it just goes back to our, like, energy.
It's not specific to the greenhouse?
No, I don't think so.
It was supposed to be specific to the greenhouse.
It was supposed to be, but I don't, I don't know if it is, because we don't use...
It's a statue? I don't know if it's tied into anything, because it was only tied into the greenhouse.
There are some switches out. We, we looked, Lance Finmore and I looked, and that's something else I think we'll have to figure out in the coming months.
Is it operational?
It is operational, I just don't know where that energy is going, or if it's even collecting any at this point, because our greenhouse doesn't use too, there's only one small outlet out there, so I'm just not sure that's something that I...
I didn't know if you run pumps or anything for any irrigation, or...
We do have pumps out there, but they're, I think, just connected to the school.
Interesting.
So, something to get on.
Thank you so much.
Staff disease.
Great, thank you so much, and congratulations to those kids for all of their hard work in music and the concerts. And 130 choir members is a lot of choir members. That's pretty crazy. Great, glad to see that it's a vibrant, active community.
Definitely.
And then we have Tim's principals' report.
I'm going to share that I don't look short and sweet.
Yeah. Great, Tracy.
I like that.
Bye.
He does our advisory leadership team, which I have two representatives of over there.
I had a feeling that's why they were here.
Will be sharing a presentation with you that has been a little bit altered, so that it is a better representation than the first draft that we shared, but we'll be able to bring that up for you to view. And then he also mentions in here about the HBHS Theater Department, and the spring play was Our Town. He says, "Bravo to the HBHS Theater Department for their recent production of Our Town. As always, our students shined on stage and behind the scenes." And there are some photos there which I actually think my old cell phone, iPhone 13, can take credit for. Surprised at how many that came out. And then he mentions in here the exciting news about Mr. Jacob Hess will be taking over for the HBHS next principal. Has been presented for and involved in a number of the end-of-the-year activities at HBHS. Mr. Hess has attended our Walk for Change, our graduation, our eighth-grade step-up day just last week. And also, Mr. Cole Etten, who will be taking over for Mrs. Amanda Zeller, has also been meeting her yearly with the administration to begin his transition into a new role as assistant principal. Says HBHS is once again in good hands.
Great. Thank you so much for taking care of that, Tracy. Appreciate it.
Is Mr. Hess the one who's caught up in the extended year in his current district?
No, no. That's a assistant principal. Okay, so, thank you. Great. So, at this point, we're going to move to our discussion section, and we are going to have that advisory update. I'd like to invite Lynn and Beth to just join us up at the table. You don't need to sit there. Yes. Candy.
It's leaving ya. You had your chin...
Need refreshments for the movie.
For the movie.
So, this is different than what was in the packet?
It looks like it's a little different. Do we have it presenting? Where's it coming up?
Oh, we're up.
No, the... Yes, you're up, sorry. So, you guys are up. The advisory presentation is up, sorry. Joe will plug it all in for you. That's cool. Spray's on, I like when it sprays.
It's nice to see so many board members and also so many parents that I know.
Yeah.
I think one's the same.
Some overlap.
He is looking at the physical management operation and sort of like what your body's like to care.
Ready, friends? All right, here we go.
So, just be mindful that the microphone needs to catch your...
Yeah, you need to speak into the mic because although...
All right, thank you. I didn't realize that this doesn't do presenter view.
That's okay. We're used to all different things.
Tracy, I'm so sorry.
Is it possible to focus the projector with the remote for the...
What I need is just...
It's okay. Don't worry, we have a few minutes. We're ahead of schedule. We're way ahead of schedule. And all the public that needs to come still and speak. They'll be filing in in droves.
And Lauren did let me...
Happy year, just go here.
Oh, she's...
All right. So, just, I didn't realize that this thing will broadcast presenter view, so we'll just do slideshow present.
That works, that's great.
All right.
So, if this isn't... You just, you need to speak into a microphone because that's how the public...
Any microphone is just picked up by the stream.
Any microphone will do.
All right, let's just sit.
Over here. You can sit as long... Yeah, that's fine. You just need to speak into a microphone.
Marvelous, thank you so much.
And it won't help us hear you, it only helps the public hear you.
Okay, great.
It doesn't actually do anything to our voices here, unfortunately.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for this opportunity for us to come and give you an update and talk about the rollout of HBHS advisory program. As this is my first year, I am, I got the opportunity to be here for the rollout, but not the four years in the making. So, my understanding is that there has been an immense amount of hard work and planning that went into this actual rollout for the Student Center Initiative HBHS Advisory Program, and it's, what we have to share with you tonight is to show how a dedicated 15 minutes a day is making a great shift in our community.
All right. Can we just, can you guys just, Tracy, Lynn and Beth, could you just say your name for the public?
Yes. Lynn Ellingworth, I teach English at the high school and have had the pleasure of being here since '01. What a great district. Our second slide, thank you, Patrick.
Of course.
The heart of the program is one trusted adult. That was the impetus. So, one trusted adult makes sure every student has one person who's going to know their name, who will notice if they're absent, will celebrate their growth, connect the students with support as needed, and it's a chance for students to connect with their peers across academic and social lines, and it fosters inclusivity and belonging, not just fitting in. Slide? Hi, and Beth's...
Magic, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Famous coordinator at the high school and also on the advisory leadership team. So, our program is built on three pillars. The first pillar is community culture and communication. So, we have spent time being able to support the community culture by connecting both with the greater community within school, the greater school community, and then by grade level. We've even had opportunities to connect to the lower levels. So, this is a picture of Cole Etten's advisory that created a connection through Penn Pals with some elementary school students and then did a little field trip down there to spend time with them.
This next slide demonstrates pillar two, building connections.
We've hosted, oh, that was you, right? This is students interacting with a range of peers and deepen relationships with advisors, whether decorating the school entrance or simply checking in. These small moments build trust.
It's also our hope next year to have more things like this that really bring in the element of service and the idea of service and connection. So, the next pillar, lifelong learning skills, and this will be our focus for year two as well. Our advisory program is a chance for the students to learn the essential skills of collaboration, communication, self-reflection, listening, checking in, self-awareness, and these are things that don't always fit into traditional academic classes, but we all know it's vital for life success and satisfaction. And this is Mrs. Paul's advisees learning some problem-solving through the Pringles Ring Challenge. Try it, it's very tricky.
And I would say in regards to the three pillars, as a first-year program, we spent a lot of time focusing on connection. This was an opportunity for us to get to know our students. I work with sophomores and I advise the sophomore group, but we know we have three years with these groups, so that was amazing. So, we knew that as a starting point, we needed to be able to really focus on just getting to know each other and helping the kids see the mission of the advisory. So, the advisory is built on the six key dimensions, a clear purpose visible in every room. We do have the, each advisory develop norms and have the three pillars in each area. Students are able to see that clearly in their space. Organizationally, we are, we have the alt leadership team. There are four of us, we each, as well as our administration, we each oversee one of the grades, so we work with those advisors, all on the same grade level, understanding of their specific needs in that grade. Our content and curriculum, we spent a great deal of time putting together a resource guide, developing a number of activities, and then materials that we could have available to the advisors so that they could have that information and ability to roll that out. Professional development was provided to all of the advisors regularly, both on PD days through staff workshops, staff meetings, so that they were regularly getting some information on how to best move forward, as well as really a lot of informal support. So, we were communicating, sending out emails, checking in with people to see what they needed so that we could help staff that were not as comfortable stepping into this role to be more comfortable with it. As an assessment tool, we did a more formal assessment, both with staff and with students, at mid-year and then at the end of the year, to gather feedback from them, to see what their thoughts were and what they would like to see as they move forward, and that was really helpful information. And then, as you can see, our leadership has, you know, our leadership started with Rick back in the day when he was first, following the NEASK recommendation, beginning to work on how to put together advisory, and then, you know, Tim was here to roll it out, and now we have Tracy to move on with us, who has just amazing skills in that area. So, that's been really wonderful.
And our next slide. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank Tim as he's departing because Tim's really had faith in the project, and he had to hold that faith until it was the right time, the contract agreed, all of those things. And I thought that took a lot of investment and faith in the project, and I'm very grateful for that opportunity to work with him.
Good teaching is good advising. The overlap, I think originally we had a slide on here that kind of talked about what advisory is not, and we want to talk more.
Next slide.
Okay. Okay, teaching is curriculum-driven. Advisory is responsive and supports the whole student. The overlap is good teaching has the whole student at the center. Academic achievement is best supported by the development of social skills and interpersonal skills. We saw students, and I think this picture is a great representation, of students from different peer groups, different friend groups, that spent time together and really developed connections that they otherwise wouldn't have had, and it just allowed for more confidence in our students and their ability to interact with each other and support each other.
This is my advisory, and I will say they look really happy because we had just had an ice cream social. But that is not what we looked like at the beginning of the year.
No, no.
It was less transformative.
It was a process, and I'm going to just share a little anecdotal thing I heard today from a teacher. I said, "I don't know, does this sound weird, but I just, I think of these as like kids I'm really connected to, like I'm, they're kind of funky auntie." And she said, "I know, I actually tell them, just think of me as your aunt." But this was a teacher who was, you know, at first a little nervous, and to know that that teacher feels that way about her advisees meant the world to me to hear. So, what advising is and isn't. And this we really had to establish at the beginning because we all know if there's just a little opening for relaxing, we don't have advisory, we have something else. Fortunately, we had this. Advisory is a time to connect, reflect, and reset in the day. It's a place where each student is valued, seen, and supported. It's a person who will know the student, can help them connect with resources for success. Best day of my advising life was when a kid said, "I hope, I hope it's okay, can we just stay and talk a little bit? I need some help with something." And it was like, "Yes, I feel like a real advisor." And a purpose, because I think it really helped reconnect a community. I think that we all had a lot of community reconnection to do after the last five years, so I think it was a really good vehicle. And what it isn't, work time, study hall, phone time, no. Next steps? And this is all based on the research that we did, the assessment we did, and we crunched the data and crunched it once, twice, thrice to look at what were the commonalities.
Yep. So, moving forward, we will be working this summer for two days. The alt team will get together to refine the program, to look at this feedback and be able to both align with our new principal, Mr. Hess, also look at our SAU goals and develop the guidelines and protocols for supporting the advisors ongoing, right? Those are already in place, but making those adjustments, doing that continuous improvement. We are going to be developing a master guide based on some feedback, looking at developing themes for months, skills, grade level curriculum that works for the various needs of various grade levels, and then some all-school activities so we can do some things that bring grade-level advisories together and then also, sorry, the whole school together. So, like as an example, this year in our level, we did a tournament in the spring, a game tournament, so in order to have each advisory meet another advisory, play a game and get to know them a little bit, and kind of build community within the sophomore class.
I just want to add a little bit to that level. We talked about, you know, playing games and things along those lines, and what we have discussed as an important aspect of advisory is that debriefing. These activities aren't just playing a game and walking out the door, but taking the opportunity to sit as a group and talk about, where did our communication break down and how could we do that better? And it's just, it's really addressing those skills, those soft skills that are needed in a way where they're relevant and internalized by the student.
I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout-out to our other team members. So, Justin Ballou just completed being the advisor to the senior advisors, and he's looping to the freshmen. Griffin Fletcher advised the freshmen, and he'll be looping to the sophomore level. Beth advised the sophomores, and she'll be looping to the junior level. And the juniors, we're all very excited to be senior advisors now for the class of 2026. We're very excited for what has been done, but we're even more excited for what's possible next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I think that was great and a really lovely summary of all of the, all of what's happening. I think there's a lot of work that's gone on to make it happen, and it's very clear from that that there's been a huge effort and a lot of work, and that goes, that does not go unnoticed. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I'm sure we have some questions, so are there any board members with questions? I'm going to look around before I look at Mr. Ross. Is there anyone with questions? Cindy, or Beth, or Kate?
I do, I do have a couple. I do, actually. There you go. Start with me. So, I had the opportunity to be involved on the committee when this was, we were building, and that was great. I also am a social worker, and I also work at a school, and we have an advisory program. So, if this is, I'm so excited that we have this now, and I was really excited to see how this year went. And I know, coming into it, last year, when this started getting introduced to a lot of the teachers, there was definitely different levels of interest. And you know, it's easy to get a little concerned then that with different levels of interest, there might be different levels of, well, buy-in and then even maybe follow-through in the classroom. So, I'm just curious, having sort of been leaders in the years and sort of following through this year, or in the grade years, how has that been and how, like, how has that been managed and how, you know, what's... What is it like by, sort of by the end of the year and what do you do with that?
I'd like to start off and then I'll pass it to Tracy. I apply the same sort of thoughts as you would in the classroom. If a student seems disengaged, the first thing you do is get curious. What? What's in the way of engagement? How can we support you? And so, that happens conversation by conversation. It's also a cultural thing, you know, if 90% of the students feel engaged, and then 92, then 93, then the whole room, the same thing can happen with an adult community. So, there are incentives, there are social positive incentives for buy-in, too.
Thank you for this question because it is something that we addressed and looked at all year. We would roam through. We, as administrators, we were each assigned to a grade level. We participated in our own advisories and connected to individual advisories that way, and I think that these guides did an amazing job of when there was someone who felt like they needed support, they felt free to articulate that and free to ask for support, and the support was given. So, there were tangible things like resources online, opportunities for somebody who felt more comfortable facilitating an advisory to be a model, and I think that as we grow in this as a community, it's going to become part of our community and not feel so uncomfortable, both with the students and the staff. So, now the ninth graders, that's all they know of the high school, so as they continue on and we go through four years of this, I think it will become more comfortable for everybody. 100%, yeah, totally agree.
So, I absolutely had that focus and concern and felt like we really needed to meet the teachers where they were as a starting point, and I do think all the front-loading of PD that we did with some really concrete ideas and support all the way through really helped them. So, I was really impressed that they came and they might still say, and we had sophomores, and for those of you who know sophomores, they're a difficult group socially. They really just kept, they just kept at it, right? And they were able to recognize the challenges but not step back and not step into it, which was really amazing. So, knowing that some of those folks were on my team and then seeing them move through that felt really good, that I think we did enough of that support upfront, but then continuing on to help them make that change, make that shift.
That's great, thank you.
Finally, I also believe that when teachers see that we are responsive to the wishes they've expressed and the needs and concerns they've expressed, and things like, can we do more all-school activities? Can we have themes? Can we have a little more overarching kind of motif going on? When they see that we're responsive to that, I think that also increases engagement.
And lastly, just as an administration, we had discussions about the efforts to not make any teacher feel like they weren't doing it correctly, and I think that that was really important. So, if they needed support, that was okay, and it was really an effort to say, "We're not going to go in and have an expectation of this is what you should be doing," and make everybody have the opportunity to feel successful. It's a learning experience for everybody, truly. That's great. I'm curious, because obviously, teachers don't stay forever. How is it handled? So, we have this group of kids who've bonded together, and some of them have bonded with a teacher, and then we have a teacher that leaves. How do we handle that kind of turnover?
That's an agenda item on our summer work.
There you go.
Actually, we're going to develop a protocol for two things. One, for if a teacher, if we're hearing that a teacher's struggling or an advisory is struggling, what's our protocol that's going to make for safe spaces for problem-solving? And also, what's our protocol for this looping? And we've already had teachers who were teachers of seniors say, "Hey, if there's an opening in this level and this level, I would be open," so that they, you know, some of our more experienced teachers were saying, "Hey, I'll step in as needed." So, there's that good factor.
That's great. Great, thank you.
Anything else, Kate?
Nope, I'm good.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, Tom, do you have any questions?
Shockingly, I do. Thank you, Kate, because you shortened my list.
There you go. I'm sure I can think of a few more if you want. I'm sure I can think of a few more if you want.
No, I just, because of remembering all of the concerns that were expressed up front, sort of piggybacking on what, what Kate had asked and some of your answers, did you specifically have any situations where you ended up having dual advisors? Where you, because we talked about pairing a comfortable person with an uncomfortable person, or was it more that people had their own, but the support was there on an as-needed
Kind of a both and.
So you did have some where there were double?
Yes, we, yes. So, so counselors did not have their own, but they paired together. So there was that opportunity for dual advisors and then administrators as well. So there was that opportunity. In addition, we each had a partner. So you could do things together with that partner and be able to like, be supported by that person as well. So there were a lot of opportunities for that, which was great because as like the alt leader, I can't necessarily leave my advisory to go to that other person, but I can bring my advisory with me and go and do it with somebody else.
Is that a long-term strategy or was that a first-year strategy?
Yeah, I think we'll talk about that more this summer, but I can tell you, it was very successful. I mean, friendships were built, connections were made, new friendships were made. It really did a lot of community building among staff, and it got people in friendships across grade levels and across disciplines, which is good for the culture.
I see it as a long-term strategy because it also managed some logistics in that if there was an advisor that was absent, that advisee, that class knew to go to their partner advisee and just things went smoothly that way.
Makes sense. To what degree was the structure of the advisories based on predetermined, call it curriculum, even though we're trying to avoid that, versus something that was either student-directed or just pure unstructured time?
Who wants to field it? Beth, do you want to start?
Sure. Okay.
We modeled some structures, but we modeled some structures that had flexibility within them, which teachers really liked. We did a lot of research. We visited other schools. I mean, we were working on this project for years, and you were in the room a number of those times, and I remember some of those conversations. So we did our research, but we also knew that HB being HB saying, here's a canned program, you must do this, would not create what we are looking to create. We knew it had to have some organic HB mojo. So it was structure, and there was also flexibility within the structure. And in our feedback, teachers really liked that. They want to be able to say, hey, this week, mm-mm, I just want to look at the, at the activities calendar and do those things, which we did. Or, oh, it's day one, let's do our routine day one check-in and, and what we called Tim's notes. And then, you know, we had sort of a, on Tuesdays, we do this, on Wednesdays, we do this, on Thursdays, we do that. But a lot of advisors said the days that went best are the days they went off-script and said, hey.
What do you want to do today?
And those organic moments are the heartbeat.
How big were the advisories on average?
About 12, average. I don't, I think there's maybe one or two that are over that. There are a few that are a bit under that, yeah. So I was gonna say, I just wanted to say that connection, because we were talking about connection, the pillar that we really felt like had to be reinforced this year. There is a process called connections that we, that we do where everybody gets a chance to speak, and it's not interactive in that way. It's just kind of open and everybody gets a chance to respond to, it could be just open and anybody can share whatever they want, or it might be like, how was, you know, what was the weekend like for you? Or like, what's your favorite summer treat? And it gives you an opportunity for kids to share. So we did really ask the advisors to set up an opportunity for a connection at least every week and then maybe do a game. We also asked them to help the students decide how they wanted to structure their three sessions a week. So like my advisory decided they were gonna do connections and then a game and then something with another advisory on that third day. But that also like shifted and changed. But we're really encouraging advisors to have students be more proactive in what they want to do. And I do know that there were some advisories where they were very student-led. Really depends on the group that you have and the leadership that you have and the confidence for those students as they started out.
And sometimes we have things that go viral, like, for lack of a better term, wisdom circles. Like, two, two advisories of graduating seniors compiled advice for juniors, and my junior group went up and we hung out and had snacks, and they're like, look, you guys, here's what you need to know next year. And other grade levels did that, and that's just what you want in a community.
That is great.
You know, we were there when it started, and I can tell you, Tom, it is so much more than even my expectations this year.
That's great.
Beth described with the student.
Oh, yeah.
Is there a feedback loop beyond the alt just being observing what's going on? Is there a feedback loop for staff and/or students to provide direct input?
We need to talk about salt. Yep. Go ahead. You want to, yep. Go ahead, go for it.
Okay. One of our goals for next year, we had the idea the first year, but we said, let's pilot first. Next year, we need to add some salt to the, to the dish. And salt is the student advisory leadership team. We'd like to develop a protocol and process for each group to select a representative from their group, and we don't know if it's gonna be quarterly or monthly, but we're gonna meet with our salt, and they will bring some, some honest flavor to the dish, we think. So.
This is, I just have to say, it's really encouraging to hear this, this feedback because as you say, Lynn, we had hopes, we had concerns, and we had a lot of skeptics.
Yeah.
And I, my congratulations to you all for, for making what sounds like it was an incredible success with a lot of constraints and a lot of unknowns.
I think it was very, I think Tim was very tuned in to working with all interested parties to find the right time to launch. The readiness was here this year.
I also see from the names up there, there were key players, some of whom were in the room, and Justin and Griffin played amazing roles during some of those sessions. I saw that you went down to, someone went down to the Hollis Elementary Schools. Does the same opportunity to connect with the Brookline Elementary Schools exist?
We'd love to.
Good, yeah.
We'd love to. I actually, I'll put that on our agenda for summer.
Thank you.
That was kind of organic because Cole had worked there before, so he had a connection. And yeah, so it was a great, he was like thinking about what he wanted to do, had made that connection. They actually wrote back and forth a bunch of times before they had that, that meeting.
Yeah, I just, I'd hate to see Brookline feel left out.
Thank you, Tom.
We'll get that in the notes.
I just have one more question. Fifteen minutes, three times a week, is that working out?
We want more. Actually, but the staff is starting to say, we want more.
Okay.
And that's very hopeful.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that we.
My students say it, that's when it'll absolutely happen.
And how, so a field trip, I would expect that would take more time. So that's like a special thing that that advisory group does and so. Great. I, I'm so impressed and so happy that it's working the way it was intended to work because the, the basic thing that these kids need to know is, how do I get along with people? How do I connect with others? How do I talk to people? How do I deal with a conflict? And all of those things are really, can really be learned in this experience. So thank you so much. Thank you. Is there anything else?
Very good.
Thank you very much for your time. And happy summer.
Thank you. Enjoy. Good luck with your.
Thank you.
Can the latest version be appended into the?
Tracy can share the link with you, but give me a.
No, I just, could it be appended into the?
We need to put this into the current agenda.
And I'll just take the speaker's notes out of the margins.
Yeah.
That doesn't matter.
Thank you so much for your time. Donald, Donald put it in the minutes and say what time people can watch, right? She'll pick it. She usually puts a, she puts a link in the minutes and says like, two, two hours and 20 minutes. But this wasn't two hours and 20 minutes, thank you. Great, thank you very much, everyone. Okay. Moving on to, we're becoming presentation-heavy, which is great. We have our writing curriculum review, and Lauren is here to present that. So Patrick and Tracy, I'm gonna have you guys stay through the writing presentation and then you can take off after that because I don't think there's anything else really related to the principles. You are welcome to stay for as long as you want, until the very end, but you do not have to, so. But I thought the writing presentation might be good because you guys might have something to add. I think we're good on policy. Do we have anything on policy?
We have lots of policy stuff.
I don't think so. I think JICD isn't on this month.
No, it's an academic integrity, but I know this one's on.
Yeah, I think we'll be okay. Yeah, all right. Okay. Lauren?
Hi, I'm Lauren Gross. I presented an update on the writing work back in January, and I'm just here to follow up, talk a little bit about the work that was done in the second semester of the year, share some of the findings, and then the recommendations as we move forward. So as a quick review, the guiding question that we developed was, how do we develop competent, confident, and eloquent writers here in SAU 41? The goals of the review, again, just a quick review, to determine the degrees to which the writing curriculum and writing instruction is vertically and horizontally aligned from K through 12, to determine the strengths and any potential weaknesses of the curriculum, to see if it's producing the desired learning outcomes, and to also hear teacher and administrator perceptions about the writing curriculum in all grades. So we had completed all of the elements from September through December as planned, and January through June went more or less as planned, one piece changed, but it was a very positive change, and I'll get to that in just a moment. So I'm going to talk about the work that was done primarily from February through June. Okay. So the first half of the year, very quickly, just to remind everybody, we looked at the writing curriculum documents in every grade, especially the new curriculum that was being implemented in grades four through six, the CKLA and Amplify Program. We reviewed student data, SAS, SATs, and teacher assessments, especially any common assessments by grade or course. We held some initial meetings with administrators at each school, technically included Hollis Primary and RMMS as well because the curriculum administrators work in both, to gather feedback from administrators about any visions, questions, comments, concerns they had as we started out with the work, and English teachers just to introduce the project and hear if they had any specific goals that they had in mind for this. Okay, so from February through June, we worked on a handful of items, and I'm going to go through the findings of those items and explain them piece by piece. One that we did just in the past couple of weeks was a teacher survey for those teachers of grades four, five, and six in both Hollis and Brookline. So I waited until the very end of the year because I wanted to give them a chance to understand and experience the full scope of their first year using the new curriculum. They were asked more or less to identify the degree to which they agreed or disagreed, felt strongly, or not so strongly, about different elements of the curriculum. And I have a couple of the sample questions on the next slide, but we were really focusing on the individual components of the writing program. So right down to the grading feature that's embedded, the frequency, level of depth of the grammar lessons, the option to differentiate for students, pacing, really trying to hit on all of the different pieces that matter when you're the teacher in that room, and also that matter to the students and their level of comfort and success with this. A couple of the sample questions that I wanted to share with you are up here. I feel that the writing lessons and assignments in CKLA Amplify ELA are effective at improving student learning outcomes. We had 12 teachers who agreed and one who strongly agreed, and nobody said that they disagreed with that. So that was very impressive to hear that feedback. We wanted to know teachers' perceptions in terms of how students are challenged and how students are performing with the curriculum. We did have a couple disagrees here, three, nine agrees, one strongly agree. However, those teachers who disagreed followed up with some narrative feedback explaining to us why, and that was really about differentiation and pacing, just hoping that there was a little bit more time to dive deeper with the students who needed it, a little bit more time to differentiate. And also, some teachers mentioned just the hiccups of trying something new that can be very overwhelming the first year, can feel like a lot. Six teachers felt that students would benefit from supplemental materials being added to the writing curriculum. This question was on there because it's a, it's an ELA program, so it's a reading and writing program and grammar all mixed into one, and we wanted to make sure that the writing components were adequate and see if we should add anything else. Although six teachers out of the 13 who responded said that students would benefit from supplemental materials, they weren't exactly writing lessons or writing materials. There were things like anchor charts and some visuals that might help. So that's something that we can certainly consider moving forward, but there were no glaring omissions from the program. Overall, people were very satisfied with it. One of the other elements that we completed in, I believe this was in March on one of the PD days, was having a vertical alignment meeting with all of the sixth-grade teachers and many of the reading and writing specialists from CSDA and Hughes and the seventh and eighth grade English teachers. And this is the part that morphed from, we were originally thinking of having the middle school folks go and visit the sixth-grade classrooms, but after proposing that to the teachers, they felt that a conversation was better because they could ask and answer and really have a dialogue about the experience using the new program and asking the questions that they wouldn't have the chance to do and just classroom observations. So beforehand, teachers from the different grades gave me the questions, and I had them prepared to share at the meeting and shared them before so teachers could start thinking about their answers, and we could dive into the details there. So some of the findings from that meeting, most of which were positive, were that student stamina for writing has improved. The sixth-grade teachers, especially at CSDA, really felt that students were ready to go when they had a writing assignment by this point in the year. They didn't have as many questions. There wasn't that hesitation or reluctance. They knew what was being asked of them, and they more or less enjoyed the writing experience because they had had so many writing experiences that semester already, or that throughout the school year is what I mean. Students are writing most days, especially paragraph responses, so the level of writing, the rigor has increased and also the amount of writing that students are doing. Some teachers reported that maybe not quite as many full essays that are more than one or two pages. However, they felt that that was well-balanced with the paragraph responses that were much more frequent. The written responses really required the students to use evidence from the text, which is huge when they get into seventh grade and beyond. And the sixth-grade teachers liked that students were starting to do that then. And the seventh-grade teachers were excited about that as well because the students can come to them and hopefully, in theory, dive into the literary analysis portion, which is what a lot of the seventh-grade writing focuses on, without having to teach those skills of how to find the evidence, cite it, use the proper citation methods in those pieces. Another interesting finding was that there is a large increase in participation in class discussions. Again, I think it was the CSDA teachers who were really excited about that, but they felt that the kids felt confident sharing their answers because they could say, well, no, I'm looking at page 76 and I'm seeing this. And then if someone wanted to, you know, share their, their view about it, and if it contradicted, they could go back and forth looking at the text instead of based on a feeling. They were interpreting and reading a lot of nonfiction texts as opposed to fiction. That being said, one of the concerns brought forward from the sixth-grade teachers that's not appear was perhaps there aren't as many novels as in the past. Not necessarily a negative thing, just a factual piece of information that they noted. And that actually is one of the questions there. How will reading fewer novels in sixth grade affect students in seventh grade? We did talk that through at the meeting, and the thought was, it might affect them. It might be harder to get used to reading full-length novels if they've only read a couple in sixth grade. However, the skills with the writing and the deep reading and the vocabulary that's embedded in this program should really give them a strong foundation for the literary analysis in seventh grade. One of the key points from seventh and eighth-grade teachers was just letting the sixth-grade folks know that students do primarily write about literature, so that will be one of the changes, but again, they should be well-prepared. We also had the second of our joint department meetings in the co-op, so that's when grades seven through 12 teachers of English meet. The second meeting was really about updating them on the findings from that meeting between six and seven and eight, to ask teachers in the co-op, knowing that we're going to be receiving these students who have this strong foundation, what can or should we do to adjust our writing curriculum? And that took a long time to hash out. We have a very strong writing curriculum in most of the grades and especially the 10th grade writing program, which all students go through. However, knowing that the students from sixth grade are already reading and writing about very challenging, high-level texts, we're aware that we might need to make some adjustments. And the overall feeling is that most people are on board with doing so, with waiting and seeing how the students arrive in the fall, what skills they actually have. and seeing how the students arrive in the fall, what skills they actually have, looking at the reading piece as well because reading and writing are so interwoven there, but keeping an open mind that some things in the curriculum may need to be adjusted as we move forward. One of the other pieces that came out of the joint department meeting was the idea of having one of our own, especially between eighth and ninth grade regularly. So I'll get to that a little later, but one of the recommendations is actually to do a monthly joint PLC between the eighth grade ELA teachers and the ninth grade ELA teachers. And those involved have already been asked about it and they're very enthusiastic to begin that work. Follow-up meetings with administrators. I met with Patrick quite a bit and Catherine Ransom, also Abby over at Hughes, and one of the pieces we worked on here at the middle school was ensuring that the seventh grade and eighth grade writing curriculum is evidence-based because CKLA Amplify is. So just reviewing the standards, everything that is in there is based on the standards, but making sure we're really hitting them all and especially those that maybe weren't touched on quite as much with the Amplify English program. Again, considering that we may need to review, revise, and/or develop materials that build off of the new foundation that the sixth graders have, and then of course, the fifth graders and so on, because the hope of this is that each year the students come up to the middle school with stronger foundational skills. One piece that I left off of here, it could be on another slide, but I'll mention it now, is seventh grade actually developed baseline writing assessment that they're going to have all students complete probably in August or September so that they have a full essay baseline to see where the students are when they arrive. Okay. So a lot of this work has just been determined and it's actually going to continue through next year. There's some action items here, so we'll continue to gather feedback from teachers in K through six because next year is when students in K through three will begin using the program. So I think it's important to give them the same opportunity to speak to myself and everyone else involved about the experience, apart from the training that they're getting in their PD days, continue to support and follow up with teachers in fourth through six. Eighth and ninth grade teachers are going to meet monthly for a PLC. Probably some of the reading and writing specialists will join too when they're available, so that should be really productive. Seventh through 12th grade teachers agreed to review, revise, and align writing rubrics. So some of that work has begun, especially with, I think it's argument writing, and I know there's a literary analysis rubric floating around, but the idea with that is to have one rubric for literary analysis essays that all students are using regardless of the teacher or course in ninth grade, and the same for 10th and 11th. I won't mention 12th grade because that's when you really get into either AP or the electives and it just doesn't work. That's not to say that the rubrics weren't fairly aligned beforehand. There's a lot, many commonalities in the curriculum, however, with many new teachers coming and some going in the past handful of years, we did want to make sure that there was a new tool that's updated that better meets the needs of students now than what might have been developed three or four years ago. Another piece that we're probably going to tackle in the fall or over the summer is revising the curriculum for the 10th grade writing course. So looking at some new styles of writing to meet the current needs of students, and I can elaborate on that a little bit, it's broken into four different units right now. They probably don't need quite as much narrative and descriptive writing as what's in there at this point. They've had a lot of persuasive writing, probably in seventh and eighth grade, so really looking at how we're chunking out our use of time, incorporating things like workplace and school communication, some of those soft skills where appropriate and where they come into play with writing, things like even emailing your teachers and pieces like that students struggle with, especially in ninth and 10th grade, and synthesis writing because that is the backbone of a lot of the writing they do in the high school, especially in other departments. So reading nonfiction from various sources and then coming up with their own opinions and ideas and sharing that in their writing. So we're hoping to add some of that. Those are just a couple examples. Ideally, create daily lessons for new teachers to follow, and that would be teachers who maybe have never taught writing before but have been in the building for 12 years. That could be the case and it's daunting when you need to come up with all of that material on your own or collect it from others, so if we can have it in one shared place where everybody who's teaching the course or has taught it has had time to meet and revise the lessons and there's one document, if you will, for each lesson that everybody uses, we're again ensuring that common experience for everybody and also that we have a lot of cooks in the kitchen, making sure that the lessons are the best that they can be for the students. And that's really all. Again, the work will continue throughout next year. I think it will take most of the school year because some of these are big projects to tackle, but overall, the teachers are on board and there's a lot of enthusiasm for the work.
That's very impressive. Great. I mean, again, you know, you guys come here with a presentation of 10 or 12 slides, but the amount of work that it took to get that information and the conversations and the hours and hours is so appreciated, so thank you so much for that. I'm gonna ask if the board has any questions? Gonna go around, see if there's any questions? I can't think of one right now, so Tom, do you have a question?
I do, but first I wanna, I don't know if you wanna close public input.
Oh, I do. I actually wrote a note. Close public input when Lauren is done. I'm now closing public input at 7:16. It's been open for a while.
First, thank you. Really interesting and helps people understand. Sounded like a lot of the experiences related to...
Hey, Tom, can you get closer to the mic because people have told me they have a hard time hearing.
What? Interpreting literature and things like that. Is creative writing just self-generated content also included in this program?
No, there's not much creative writing in there. That was one of the comments that I saw the most on the surveys, and teachers are really careful not to say that that's a negative thing, but it's an observation they've made is that there's not a lot of opportunity to write creative pieces.
Do they actually write or is it mostly keyboard input?
Okay, it's mostly keyboard for the essays, however, the shorter pieces are handwritten. We had a pretty long conversation about that during one of the joint meetings. The sixth grade teachers said they get workbooks, the students do, and they usually have the students write by pencil in the workbooks or notebook paper.
I've heard that it's a very different thought process...
Yes, it is.
...to write as well.
Yeah.
How is the writing judged so that it's not subjective?
So there's a grading tool embedded in Amplify that I think actually some of it is done by the computer, Gina. I don't want to misspeak on that, but my understanding is that part of it is computer-generated, but there's also very clear rubrics that the teachers align. So they practice grading the different essays and talk about the rubrics that they're ideally interpreting them the right way. And some of it is computer scored.
Are the teachers responsible for correcting grammar?
What do you mean by that? Can you clarify?
My observation is that there are a significant number of adults who do not know grammar rules real well.
Yep. Okay. I understand what you're saying. So one of the pieces we talked about quite a bit actually was is there a grammar program that we can adopt for ideally like grades four through 12 because a lot of teachers feel the same way you just shared. There isn't one that will fit or one that can be continued for each grade. So what we're trying to do is identify something that will work at each grade level even if it's a different program. Yes, the teachers should be correcting the grammar as much as they can.
Oh, I didn't know if this was an area that relied on the software to do.
Oh, oh, I don't know about that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions?
I'll withhold.
I just wanna say that it has been an absolute joy to meet with Lauren every two weeks to talk about the progress. I, you know, had a particular goal in mind and I think the work has far surpassed that and I was so excited when I was asked for permission to continue the work. Success.
That's great.
So I'm really excited about what's to come.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so that's my only question is, do you, I don't want to put any pressure on you. Do you think you want to do like a whole year and just come back next year in June? Or did you like the January check-in?
I think January was good. Whatever works for you is fine, but I do think that a significant amount of work, especially for the writing course in 10th grade, will be done by the fall, so.
Okay. So, yeah, so maybe we can schedule you in January and we'll, you know, kind of make a note to do that. But if for some reason it's not a good time for you, you can let us know. So, yeah, does anybody else have any questions?
Are Brookline and Hollis using the same programs and are they implementing it similarly?
They are, yes. They're using the same exact programs at a similar pace. I think the ELA block, the amount of minutes is a little bit different in each district, but overall, they're doing the exact same thing at more or less the same time.
Excellent.
And the thing that's so tricky about writing or any of the humanities, if you will, is that you have to balance the need to get everybody on the same page and have the same rubric, but also allow people to be individuals as teachers and allow that flexibility. And so it's such a challenge to, it's different than math, it's just different, and so it's more complex in a lot of ways because it's just not like two plus two equals four, but what makes a great persuasive sentence, what makes a great, and you identify those things, but it's still, there's always gonna be a little subjectivity in that, and that's okay because that's what life is, so that's great. That you're, I can see, I can hear it, that you're working through all that and that's fantastic, so.
So slightly off-topic, but it just made me think of this, and I think relevant. Are we using softwares like TurnItIn or something similar to check and balance?
Oh, yes. Yes, we're using TurnItIn at the high school and I believe, Patrick, did they use that at the middle school? No?
So TurnItIn is just, discontinued.
That's what I had.
For June 30th. At the request of both the English and history departments, so they found a different tool that they'd like to implement, and so that is moving forward for seventh through 12.
Gotcha.
Great. And you said that one of the things you'd like to do with the writing curriculum that I do really, that I keyed in on is helping kids learn how to write a great email or a really good thank you letter, because I have kids in their twenties that will often say to me like, "Why do I say?" And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, you should know how to do this." So it's great to like kind of do some business writing or that would be, that's a great idea, so that way I don't have to do that.
Uppercase letters in texting, periods.
No, they don't do punctuation in texting.
No, they do not.
Okay. Thank you so much, Lauren.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh, great job. Thank you. And you guys are welcome to scoot. You do not need to stay for the rest of this meeting. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to, all the fun stuff is over.
Wait, you don't want to listen to the revenue report?
I love the revenue report. Like, I really do.
You're not making one to feel...
It's a fun stuff, too. I love it all.
Thanks, Tracy.
Can't lie.
No, it's just the numbers.
All right, are you ready? But you do such a great job presenting the numbers that it makes me like love that.
You're trying so hard.
No, I know, I really do. Every time she presents, I'm like, "Oh, okay, it makes complete sense now." Sure.
Happy summer. Thank you.
Bye, Patrick.
See you soon.
Bye, Patrick. Happy summer.
You, too.
Okay. So I just did this a month ago, you know. Not a lot has changed, but since the last report in May, we're continuing to project the savings and expenses. And because of these savings last month, as you recall, the BA recommended purchasing three things, lab tables, ADA renovations for the middle school, and part of the middle school roof section. So on this expense page, the first two of those items are encumbered. The lab tables and ADA renovations on this report are in the encumbrance column, so that's part of that expense balance now. So we still have $971,000 in savings and expenses. Then in the revenue, on the revenue side, it's slightly increased from the May report due to additional grant money, so bringing our total revenue surplus to $582,000. So the projected fund balance at the end of the year now stands at $558,643. And from this balance, we need to hold the amount of our prepaid expenses, which are $344,000. The prepaid expenses include the Chromebooks, laptops, and interactive flat panels, which we were able to purchase early due to avoid, to avoid potential price increases due to the new tariffs. But the $344,000 are actually being charged to the FY '26 budget, so we're just holding that money per the auditors. That's what we do every year, so we can't spend that. So after accounting for the prepaid items, prepaid items, the amount we're expected to return to the taxpayers is still over the $200,000 that we had promised, $214,327, and we have a few weeks to go, but if history's going to repeat itself, typically our encumbrances keep dropping, so the number should do, should increase.
Great. That's fantastic.
Yep.
So we were able to get some things done this year and, yeah, that's good news.
It's great.
Are there any questions for Linda? Put your mic down.
Yeah.
Put it in the right place.
We talked about bringing some of the middle school roofing forward for work. Is it also being brought forward from a payment standpoint and is that the...
Yeah, so the last month you guys voted to approve, as Linda mentioned, the lab, so three items, lab tables, ADA accommodations, and then the, section two, roof one, roof section one was part of the maintenance metal trust. Section two, we're hoping to expand how much we can accomplish this summer on the roof with the idea that we would use some of this fund balance.
So is that what she referred to under the encumbered items under...
So what we've encumbered are $52,000 for the ADA renovations and about $12,000 for the lab tables. The roof section from last month's memo was $173,000. That's not included in this report because if we were to put the $173,000 in there, we would not be able to return the $200,000 to the taxpayers on paper. However, as I said, as encumbrances reduce, we still may be able to do the roof, the $173,000, but we can't reflect that now with these projections.
If, are we gonna do the work regardless of whether it's paid out of '25 or '26?
So that's a really good question. So '26 has section one in it. '26 also has the Chromebooks, the laptops, and the flat panels, but we prepaid those to avoid tariffs. So whether we hold the money in '25, as we have to for the auditors for items that are literally sitting in boxes in the classrooms because the boxes can't be all potential I want, whether we hold the money in '25 and pay it out after '25 ends or do a transfer from '26 to pay it, either way, that frees up $344,000, so we would be able to complete the roof this summer.
Okay.
Not complete, I would say complete sections one and two.
Yeah. And at the discussion about the project, the facilities project, and we talk about the 5%, you had mentioned the whole thing about the wording allows for us to prepay up to 60 days and still conclude. Do we have the, is it a cash issue or an accounting issue?
It's neither, so...
No, I mean...
Well, we could pay, so we could use money from here and then the bond pays it back.
Are we actually likely to get billed early for, I mean, pay the bill or just get billed?
We'll receive an invoice.
Okay, so it's not a question of having, having the bank balance to pay it.
Correct. And the EEI is well aware of when the bond money becomes available, so it's not a concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Linda? Thank you very much. It's a great, great... You're welcome.
A comment for Linda, which is, "Thank you for keeping things sane during all the insanity."
Thank you.
Excellent job, Linda, as always. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so, and you are welcome to, you do not have to stay.
Thank you. I appreciate that, too.
I mean, these meetings are so thrilling, like, great. All right, so moving on to the facilities committee update, I don't think we have too much, right? Because we did everything last month and last week, we did the bond, I signed the thing and we're good, we voted for that, so.
The only thing I will say is we have scheduled the next facilities meeting for, currently for July 9th, for anyone who's interested. We did that because it's after the date that we, the earliest date we think something might be decided on a federal level. And we're starting to get to the point where we're likely to look at future facilities, things beyond just the HVAC and solar project, so I think that this board may be asked in the near future to prioritize other facilities-type projects for that committee and see whether there's any adjustments or additions needed to the makeup of the committee.
Okay. It might be helpful for the board to get a capital improvement plan update from Lance or something in the near future if we're gonna be asked those questions. I think it would help for us to know what the... I think it would help for us to know what the needs are.
Yeah, because we've been so focused on this stuff.
We have to figure out timing wise because I want to talk at the end about whether or not we're going to meet in July and all of that. So I have to figure that, we have to figure that out.
Gina, do you, I just, do you know when they're actually going to start work on on the propane change, the oil to propane?
Uh, I believe tomorrow.
Wow.
Yep, students were still in today and then tomorrow.
Watch out for holes in the ground.
And then Tom, moving on to the budget committee update. Oh, I have one question. It's not really facilities committee, but does anyone know if the um, the town committee about that Rob was appointed to the Hollis, have they met?
I'm unaware if they have.
Okay, and is there someone I'm supposed to know notice that Rob is the committee person or? We don't even know who's in charge of that. Okay, I'll figure that out. I'll ask one of my friends who's a select one. Okay, um, budget committee update.
I missed the last meeting because of a con, but.
Okay, well, that's great. We can all go watch the meeting so that we'll get the update that way.
Well, the minutes minutes are up too.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, next is a stipend committee update. I assume that comes from you, Cindy?
The committee met on June second. I actually was not here, so I met with Brian ahead of time. Um, we started looking at, he has a spreadsheet, which is not part of this um, stuff that he sent in from a survey that was sent out to all the people who had been in clubs or the coaches and wanted to get an idea of hours that they had spent um, in their view from the last year, you know, one day a week or three days a week when their meetings were. Um, and the overarching thing that we noticed was some of them vary differently from the middle school to the high school. When you look at like a play, the, you know, play time go, the amount of time that goes into it is pretty much the same. It might be, you know, they do a shorter play, but the same type of timing um, was part of the conception of what how we were looking at it is how many hours. So the main thing that he sent for the the projections of what we thought was some of them are to um, kind of even out those um, tiers for some of the, I don't know, let me find the last.
I think it's the recommendations is probably what we need to look at the most is the, because everything else was just pretty much where we're at, right? And then it's the recommendations, it's page.
So for the recommendations, they have um, some new things that have not been part of the budget. Um, some of them have not been part of the budget because they haven't been in effect for more than two years. So you'll see on the spreadsheet that he sent, um, he has two at the, uh, three at the middle school. Two is adding um, because they don't have those at all and I guess they've had them in the past. And I think that they anticipate that they'll have someone else um, step up to that because they had someone that did it for years previously that was not no longer here. Um, robotics, they wanted to move tiers because of the timing and the amount. Um, so they want, they felt like that that should go, this is from the committee. Um, and the looking at the findings that they got from the survey that they sent out. Um, and then you can see a couple of them are shifting. Those are the ones that we saw that didn't seem like that they were being looked at, like the middle school ski club, kind of same thing. The timing is pretty much the same, um, but for some reason they were in a much lower tier. So the shifting for the tiers was the recommendation based on what we looked at with all the big spreadsheet. Um, and then for the um, two in the bottom, he is hoping to do a JV wrestling and a JV golf. And those would be added because he sees that they have the participation numbers and would like to be able to provide those, you know, students a chance to um, do something. I mean, golf is a pretty small team and a very short season, but he they've had a big interest in it. Um, and the same with wrestling.
So when when um, are you done? I'm sorry, can I ask a question? So when and when he's recommending adding a club, the club will have run for two years. So is it the second year of the club or it's the third year?
No, it's the third.
So the club runs for two years without any stipend and then you get to the third year and that's when the stipend?
Yes.
I thought it was three, technically three because we're budgeting for twenty-two, twenty-seven.
Right, okay, I see what you're saying.
So two years of success puts you on the budget for another year later.
Okay.
So the, yeah, these are payments that have not been made out of the budget previously.
Like, we haven't had these clubs or we've had these clubs, but we haven't been, we haven't been paying a stipend to those um, people.
And I think that's one thing, there's, you know, a few things that we would probably look at um, beyond the budget to recommend and maybe that's one of them because it's been noted that if you're doing a club here at the middle school, you only have two years. So, you know, there may, there may be a need to to change that or look at that. Um, but this was something that we just wanted to get, try to even everything out and then we're going to be looking at, you know, some other ways maybe um, like that for to change the timing or um, the um, I think that, you know, they may have interest, you know, we may have somebody come up with a club that in the fall that we don't know about. So I think that was one of the things that we would like to try to figure out a way to, you know, make that happen, even though they don't have. You know, we, it may not be on our tier right now that in two years it would be. Um, so there's just some little things that he wanted, he feels like that the coaching is, you know, pretty steady because he spent a lot of time on that, obviously, but we're just trying to get the arts um, up to par with the amount of times that they've spent. And I'm not sure if the if the committee will um, remain the same for next year. As far as the school, the um, Cole was on it, so Cole would be one of the administrators, basically to take Tim's place. He was already on the um, committee and I believe everybody else would like to stay on it.
Tom, did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple. Um, first is a comment that the idea of uh, having to shorten the cycle in the middle school, I actually think it's better to have it stay at three because that will show whether it's a program that is dependent on just a certain cohort of students who are moving through versus a program that has longevity. If if the program survives with new students coming in, that's indicative of being a program worth continuing. That's just my point of view. But um, I, it looks as though in the comparison, when there are two groups that have similar amount of times but different amount pays, the assumption is the one that's getting paid more is the, that's the right amount. What I don't see here, maybe it exists, but it would be nice to see the level connected to uh, an amount of time. I suspect there is a, either a guideline or at least a rough feel for that. But it would be nice to see um, for for understanding that a program at a certain tier has an anticipated workload associated with it.
Yeah, and that's what the survey is. Brian has all the raw data, so he, I can have him pull it for the ones that he's sent in.
That would be for like next year's presentation, like, you know, we don't need it this year, but but maybe next year it'd be nice to see a little bit.
That will make it obvious that.
Like what the averages are. Is this like, does this average an hour a week? Does this average twenty hours a week? Like, what's, you know, what are we looking at that way?
And that's why they recommend it shifts is because there was a big variation in some of them. And participation, I mean, we did get those numbers, um, but, you know, the advisors running the club, whether they have five or thirty. So it, I really, we decided that the hours was really more a comparable um, way to look at it to begin with because this is just our first recommendation.
And I kind of disagree with you, Tom, on the whole two-year cycle, mostly because I feel like I don't know if I'm comfortable with someone running a club for two years and never getting paid for it. And sometimes it is cohort driven, like sometimes you do have a group of kids who really want to do Dungeons and Dragons and you do that for two years at the middle school and then you don't have those kids, but should you not get paid for that second year? Like, that person's not getting paid.
They're not getting paid for that second year anyway.
Well, I'm I'm saying if we shorten the cycle so that if it was a one-year successful club and we know it's going to rerun, that the person would get paid at year two instead of waiting for.
Yeah, there's just no way to budget that.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah, the budgeting is the problem unless we put a budget, a line item in for those type of situations.
I mean, if if you want to create a pool of money available for of clubs under evaluation, you know, I can support that, but my point is not so much the idea of of withholding pay as making the club a tenured activity.
Yeah, I think that's, maybe that's what it is, is maybe a little a stipend pool that's or a pool of of like a startup where it's not even, it's a small amount, but it just, it's for those folks who.
And you may, you may specifically want to have something that you've got a group of kids that you know it's it's a one-off group, but these kids are doing something special and you want to support it.
Right, and but and you want a teacher who feels like they are getting compensated for it. So I think there's a way to solve the problem that makes you feel comfortable and me feel comfortable as well.
That being said, um, there are, there, for example, there was, this doesn't usually happen. There was a club advisor ready to go for a particular club here, maybe it was video game club, I can't remember, which used to be wildly popular and and nobody stayed to participate in it, um, so we didn't pay out the stipend.
Right, right, yeah.
So and so over time, just as we add over time, if we don't see that there's participation.
Sure.
It doesn't get paid out, you know.
So, and then this is just a procedural question. I know that we're supposed to review the stipends every year now. It's part of our deal that we've made, but is this something we need to approve as a board? Do we approve stipend recognition?
No, you, you, well, so you review the stipends, which were provided to you, all of these, right? Um, but then I think at, in my opinion, you should at a minimum direct me as to, like, we already started FY27 budget.
Right.
Uh, do I add this uh, fourteen thousand dollars to the budget under new items?
Well, I think there needs to be, I think what there needs to be is a formal request from somebody to make the changes and or add the activities to it. So the review, the the review itself does not inherently um, do anything other than present the data to us and let us look at it. The, just like we have discussions and deliberations, there should be a a a formal request to add these clubs and ch- and change these things. I mean, we could do it ad hoc on, based on what we've got here. But I think going forward, that second step should be formalized and in our agenda.
So so do you feel like it should go into like the rounds, the budgeting rounds, like round one? It's a request from the, like a, the stipend committee and then that goes into the rounds? And so then the superintendent and the team that goes through the budget rounds can look at that and say, these are the recommendations from, you know, there's fourteen thousand dollars in additional stipend money that would be, that's been requested by the stipend committee and then it would just go, if you're going to do the same process of doing those rounds.
Just two elements. One is, does the board support these clubs existing?
Yeah, so we could make a.
And the other element is, do, does the budget support the payment of the stipends necessary to do it?
So how do we do that? Make a formal motion and approve the stipend? But that's not the way we would do that.
Um, well, if, let's say it were a class, how would we do it if it was a course? We would have to approve the addition of the course, right?
We would approve the program of studies.
Okay, so I think that we would have to approve that these courses exist. And then in the budgeting process, then the people making the budget would have to say,
Whether or not to work.
We have it, we can afford it.
So are you saying that without board approval, the baking club can no longer exist? Or are you saying?
No, I'm saying without a, without a board approval, it cannot become a paid, a paid activity.
Okay, because I heard you say approve whether or not these exist.
Well, I don't know what the distinction is between something that people choose to do and something that gets funded. Because we were never asked
Sure.
to to do it in the first place. We only get asked when they want money.
I feel like this should be part of the budget process and we don't vote on every single thing as the budget goes through. Like, the the superintendent has brought forward the requests from, you know, the athletic director or the principals or whatever for all the different things. So this is like a request from the stipend committee would be like an, I guess, a new line.
But don't we approve anything that that involves hiring of a new staff member?
Yeah, so uh, professional staff, yes, not support staff, so these might be support staff.
No, I'm just, I'm using it as a model. So if it's an activity that's going to require having a paid uh, individual adding to the payroll, whether we call it second or.
Um, so this is my thought. We typically spend two months on things, we review it, so we're provided a recommendation
Right.
at this meeting. At the next meeting, let's have a deliberative items to move these to new items spreadsheet by supporting their existence or their increases or whatever.
Yeah, that that makes perfect sense.
And I think, I think this would be the appropriate time if people have support or objections to them in principle.
Right. Do you have any of those?
Pardon me?
This would be a good time to say, do you have anything that you don't support or?
No, conversely, I'm looking at the the financial impact of this versus the the benefit that our our population gets from these activities. And I think that's a, it's a very small amount to pay to to get the benefit. The only form that just keeps cropping up is the fishing one that's that's still there and I'm just wondering, we don't have a boat.
Well, just wait till you see the new item.
Okay, the fishing was not on here. No, it is, it's it's on here, right, it is.
So my question is, should that be on it for the next round?
Okay, so Tom's still, Tom is still questioning fishing.
Where we have, we don't, we don't have an advisor who has a boat.
It's a good question. Okay.
Maybe we should combine them with crew so it fits.
Do we still have a crew club?
It's, we, we don't know.
Okay, okay. Okay, so this is great. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you for hashing the process through with me. Um, some of everything doesn't work that way. Um, is there anybody who has any other comments on what we're funding from a, um, what we're doing? Not just with the recommendations, but overall, like Tom has some questions about fishing. Is there?
Let them fish, Tom.
The question is, are they able to fish?
Yes, I think that a few of them can fish. I think a couple, I think we had a boat last year. But that is, you know what, that's a good question for Brian and we'll go back to Brian with that.
And that was the question that I was told that that we don't have a boat.
I thought we had a boat last year. We don't own a boat, but somebody had a boat.
Somebody had a boat.
This last season, we were told they didn't.
That's right.
No, they did. They had a boat this last season because they actually, in the fall, there was a boat and there was a group. It is a very small number of kids who participate because, because you're only allowed to have that.
In the tournament.
It's not a very significant amount of money that we spend, so, and the people who are interested in it are passionate, so.
But I I I don't mean to blame you, but you can only have four in the tournament.
Yep.
There's a lot of activities we do where only a small portion of the group gets to go to the states or gets to do this. Even even in Arbea, so if we're going to have it, I would like to have it open to anyone who want wants to fish.
I think it is open to anybody who wants to fish. I think right now we have four kids who want to fish.
Okay.
No, 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 we, we made cuts.
Oh.
See, that that's my point.
Okay, so you'd like it to be a a cut-free program?
Um, I would like to have it be at one with a larger opportunity for to participation, even if only you, if you have to have cuts.
Like, you have to qualify to go to the tournament.
So we're going to buy a lake.
And a boat and multiple boats.
Okay, we're going to move on from this because I'm not hearing anyone else, but I hear your comments. We could talk more about it next month.
It's worth talking, having it done just to shut me up.
Until next time.
There's so many things that could go that way, Tom, but.
All right, moving on.
Okay, so moving on, so we've got that. Thank you, Cindy, for that and for all the work the committee has done because it's a lot of work.
It's it's really come a long way as far as meeting our our requirements for the sta- oh, that was just the last question is, how are the stipends and the opportunities to participate being communicated to the staff? Because that was a big, a big question during contract discussion is, how does staff know what's available to them?
So the stipend chart is available on the website right next to the CBA.
Okay.
Um, and for coaching openings. And for coaching openings, there's an email that goes out directly to first the school, so the middle school or the high school, then to the SAU in total. There are also, those are advertised within Frontline as you would apply for a teacher job. For the clubs and stipends, that is communicated at the beginning of the year, existing stipends for any openings to the whole, to the staff.
And that was a que, that process is, is something that was questioned. Is having done it for previous year guaranteeing you the position, is it, does that give first right of refusal? Or is every year it opened to anyone who wants to apply?
It is not guaranteed that you are coming back, but if there is not a concern, it's not, they're all, they're not all re-advertised annually.
But if at any point in time a staff member said, what do I need to do to be considered for this position?
Sometimes historically what has happened is there becomes like a co-advisor for a period of time and then with a, with an intent to transfer.
Is there the possibility of somehow in the document or whatever that describes a stipend also describe the process by which a, a faculty or, or a person can apply to be considered for a advisor, advisory position?
Let's do it.
She's got a note, yes, gonna make a change.
Okay, so moving on to deliberations, I'm gonna see what action the board will take regarding the maintenance expendable trust. So I need a motion to authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed three hundred, three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars from the Hollis Brookline Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund for the purchase of the maintenance items identified during the public hearing.
So I have to-
By Kate, and I need a second?
Second.
By Beth, thank you. I don't know why I write this down. I do every, every single time, write it down, never look at it again, but I write it down.
In case Dawn asks you.
Yeah, in case Dawn asks me, you're right, 'cause she might, okay. So is there any more comment on this?
So those are the items that Linda highlighted, right?
No.
No.
These are the items that were highlighted in the public hearing, so this is the-
Gina highlighted.
Gina, this is the roof section, phase 10 of 10 at the high school. This is the elevator retrofit, phase 2 of 3 at HBHS. And then it's the roof section, I believe it's section 1.
Oh, it's not that, does this include the finishing of the middle school elevator too?
Oh, and I'm sorry, yes, and the, and the elevator, I missed that.
Yeah, I'm just curious, is, is the elevator here done, done?
Now it is.
Okay, so we just have to pay for it, right?
Well, the five, so we thought we were done.
Yeah.
And then upon final inspection, we had to-
Do something else?
Do something else, and that's the five thousand eight hundred twenty.
And that was done?
That was done. We're good.
Okay, so are there any other questions on that? All those in favor, five zero.
Thank you.
Motion carries. You are welcome. All right, and so this is how we're gonna try the policy memo. There are a lot of policies on here. There is one policy that we have to move forward to adopt. So what I'd like to do is put the memo on the table as presented. Hopefully, you'll be willing to adopt that first one if you pass that.
Tabling is putting-
Putting it, I'm sorry, putting it, I need a motion to approve it, and then putting a motion out there. And then, and then if there's any changes or questions or comments with any of the ones that are, we are simply reading, I ask that you will allow us to just take those back to the policy committee to make those amendments and changes. So we will talk about them or trying to consolidate this. So I need a motion to approve the recommendations identified in the policy memo as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. I need a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, so the first policy on the memo is the fourth reading and adopt of policy IKL. That's the Academic Integrity and Honesty Policy that we read in September and October, and then we amended it greatly in January, and we had no comments that were, no changes. We made no changes based on the comments. So if there's anybody who has questions about that one, I have to look at, look that in. So again, there were no changes based on the January 25th meeting. So is there anyone who needs to comment on that one? I'm gonna move through these pretty quickly. So seeing none, we'll move to the second reading of policy KFD, which was the use and location of automated external- Thank you, AEDs, they're life-saving. We are on our second reading of that. We also did not make any, I don't believe, we made no changes to this based on our notes from the 521 meeting. So are there any comments or questions on that one? Okay, so moving on. I'm gonna move quickly, so JLCC makes me itch, this is pediculosis management. We made some amendments on the first reading, but I don't believe we've had any changes here. So we amended it, obviously, to bring it forth for the first reading. We didn't get any feedback that made us want to make any changes to it. It follows the law. It's itchy, but it follows the law, so.
I'm just curious, was it the law that created the situation where you can't make any, was that the big change to the law?
You can exclude children from school when they have lice or nets. And so we've written the policy as per our recommendations by legal counsel and I think NHSBA, so. Okay, so that's pediculosis management. Then we've got JLCJA, which is an emergency plan for sports-related injuries and additional protocols for athletes' participation. And again, I have to look at it myself, but I believe there are no changes based on the comments from our 521 meeting. This is just to develop the plan, and again, we haven't made any changes. So are there any questions or comments on that one? So moving forward, we have policy JLF. Again, I don't think we have changes. I think we went through it. And again, most of these policies are coming to us from, this is reporting child abuse and neglect, as all of you know. We kind of have to follow the law on this. We did have some questions about how reporting works if someone overhears something, and I think the answers that we kind of all stated at the time probably fulfilled that.
They were my concerns. I read through the thing in depth and I'm, I understand it better.
Yeah.
I also want to point out that you had mentioned there was maybe controversy at our last read. So we, in policy, we reviewed all the minutes from May 2021, June, August 2021 to see what all the comments and any concerns raised, and-
We didn't really see any, so, we don't know, it might have been a different policy, but it, this one did not garner a lot of conversation in its first readings back in 2021, so.
Paul, can I just ask, I'm the committee to fix the font?
Sure. Oh, we have different fonts, sure. Okay, so we'll go back to policy and change the fonts, fix the fonts, yeah, you know, we do-
I probably get fixed eventually, but sometimes in 2021, they're kind of funky.
It happens all the time, like, we bring it in and multiple people work on it.
Yep.
Okay, so DAF is Administration of Federal Grants. This one is a, is a short, easy policy that doesn't take a long time to review at all. And again, we made the changes that were necessary based on the law, and-
Where are our policies actually posted now?
They are posted on Diligent, so you can click on Co-op or Hollis or Brookline or Policies. And then once you hit Policies, then you click on Co-op, and then they're all listed there. You could also do searches for like child abuse.
I was asking where they're hosted.
Where they're hosted, they're on Diligent. We also just, so we all know, once we update Diligent, we also update a shared drive so that we have a electronic copy of every single policy that's current and up to date, just in case.
Because we had that thing happen, where, so they're not hosted in NHSBA anymore.
Well, we, we moved from there, we went to, did we go to Board Docs for a while with them?
Yeah, so Diligent is the upgraded Board Doc, so it's the same company.
Oh, it is the same company? So that thing I sent you about, did that impact Diligent too?
Yes, but, so what, it impacted certain districts and they were notified. We are not one of them. We don't hold, you, we can as a board hold content that's private for only board member viewing. We don't put any documents-
We don't put any of our non-public minutes up there?
We put our non-public minutes, but the ones, once they're approved, so we don't hold-
But the sealed minutes are not there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're fine.
Okay, so moving on from DAF, I don't hear any comments or questions about that.
I just want to share that some of these, some of these policies, we did a first read in January and then with the break of the policy committee, they-
Yeah, that's true.
Were just sitting around for a while, so we did, we made changes in version one, or, sorry, first reading, took a couple of months off, so now we're bringing them back second with no change.
Yeah, but we, the ones I'm telling you, when I say no change, it means we didn't make any changes in policy, so we, we went through it to see. So we're at J I, J D F, we're on JIC at this point, that's the student conduct one. Just for your information, this is just an overview of our student conduct, you know, and then there is another policy that we brought forth for first read in January that we have not brought forth again because we have some more work to do on it. So it's a, it's a lot more detailed about all the different things. It's just a general policy that's required by law. And I would say the one thing that I would add to these is that we have not put that on here. Like, at least the ones I have in front of me, it doesn't say whether they're required or priority or, I don't know if you have those in front of you, but I don't know if we need that, but that's, we don't need it, but it's, it's helpful to, to know when they're required, I think. So that we know that they're, okay. So any questions on JIC? All right, so EBCB, which is fire drills, we've changed the language. It's no longer fire drills. We're calling it emergency drills because that is exactly what we changed, so it's not, they're not fire drills. So that's the only change we made on it, and that was based on a suggestion from somebody last month. Member Solon suggested the title be changed, and we did. Look at that. See, we listened to you, Tom. Look at that, there's proof, proof's in the pudding. Okay. Next is EH, Public Access to School District Records. So I guess we call this the right to know, right? Is that pretty much? And that one, did we make a change, Gina?
We did, and it's hard to find, but I just had to look it up 'cause I couldn't find it. It's district records. So they were sometimes in parentheses, sometimes not, sometimes capital, sometimes not. So we just made it consistent throughout.
Well, the current one isn't.
Oh, what did we need to, what?
The, the first line and the second line have them in quotes.
Yeah, there's a reason for that.
The fourth line does not.
Because the first line is defining it, and then it moves on to just using the term. So that's why it's in quotes as-
It's intentional?
It's intentional.
What wasn't intentional is originally it was, like, we missed a quote once, and then there was a capital R, a lowercase r, and so now it's capital D, lowercase r, in quotes on first and second line.
Okay.
So that's what we did with that one, just a little cleanup. All right, and then EHR, that's now the procedures, which I don't think procedures absolutely have to be approved by us, but we have them, and the, the change-
This one now has to, this is now required by law, procedure.
So you can see that the changes we made are in numbers six, seven, and eight. It's, it's not required, and Gina can speak to this more, but I'll just-
So, so they amended the RSA around electronic records to allow us to charge. And that was last year. We originally brought this forward in January without six, seven, and eight. But as we brought them forward in Hollis and Brookline, who have since adopted EHR, they've adopted a fee associated with electronic records due to the fact that the ninety-nine point nine percent of the records requests are electronic in nature, and some of them are thirty thousand emails where we're paying exorbitant amount of legal fees to redact content from there. We certainly go through the process of requesting that the scope be narrowed and make it more reasonable. So the, the idea is that the first two hundred fifty records are, are not gonna be charged, but anything above the two hundred fifty records, when it reaches that point of being very costly for us to produce, we would have the ability to charge fifty cents.
And I think we can charge up to a dollar per record. And to be, just to, I think Hollis and Brookline are both charging fifteen cents per record, but we, in the policy committee, said, why not charge fifty cents? Because there is an expense to redacting and all of that. So we're throwing it out there for you, and if you don't like that, we can certainly take it out.
It's fifty cents per?
It's per record, right.
But my, my question is on six, which is copying?
That's what I was looking at, sorry, I was confused.
Isn't it, wasn't there a per-page fee?
Yeah, it is under, it's under the copying instead of being under the electronic records.
It's-
No, but we have a fee if you request photocopies, and we're allowed to charge a fee, but it's a per-page fee.
It is a per-page fee, so I don't know.
But it's not stating that.
No, I understand.
That's, yeah, that's why it's, 'cause a record could be five pages or fifty.
Right. I think the electronic communications fee is just per record.
So we'll, we'll take a look at that, 'cause the intention was fifty cents per page.
I agree, I think it was just, it just got caught up in the editing net, so that was my comment for EHR.
So that's an easy thing that we'll bring back to policy, and I hope that you'll approve the memo even though it's not a substantial.
Well, we got feedback.
Feedback, great feedback, thank you. Now IGE, which is parental objections. This is for first reading. So again, you know, if you have other things that you want us to change, we can bring it back to policy.
I have a comment that covers, it's on IGE and the next one IHAM. I highlighted on IHAM, but I'm trying to figure out where it is on this one.
Did you have something you wanted to say to introduce it?
No, this is just in line with updating the language that were required by law to have in policy.
It's in the last section, I think.
Well, do you want to move to IHAM so you can find it, and then you can, we can talk about it for both?
I do, I can say, comment that historically we've done this pretty much across the board, but it was very much mandatory for all of our Co-op teachers this year to by course send out the course expectation sheet along with, at a minimum, a link to the curriculum that includes all the instructional materials at the start of the year, and it was sent out by ParentSquare, and then you had to acknowledge that you received and read them. So that was confirmation that you, you were provided notice of any particular, let's say textbooks or novels that you might find that you don't want your child reading, and then therefore the policies would then be able to-
Okay, and that, basically my question, what I highlighted, it says, this line says, parents and legal guardians shall be notified by, you know, or other written means, website, blah, 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 not less than two weeks in advance of the use of the curriculum, course material. And I was curious, how do we do that to everybody? And that was, so-
And that, 'cause that the first day of school or the-
It's, yeah, it's the first day.
First day of school.
It might be the second day of schools, because kids are still doing add drop, but, but it's provided right away. And, you know, if a student then changes courses, it's second semester or whatever, they're shared just in case there are different expectations or different-
What happens if you don't get a response?
We are required to get the response, and so then the teacher communicates with those. And so they have the list of who said, yep, I received it, or I read it, and those who have not.
Have you had any instances where someone comes back to you and said, I didn't know this was gonna be on it, and you have to show them a written notice that they agreed to it?
You know, this year, we have not had a situation like that. We have historically had concerns that they weren't notified. We provided evidence that notification and the information was available. At the end of the day, then just, you know, you can still object.
Oh, yeah, no, I just, I'm just, this is one of those, they've pushed so much down to the schools to have to be proactive, and I was curious how we're able to manage that. And are we capturing our labor costs of doing so? When I say capturing, obviously we're not charging anyone, but, but- When I say capturing, obviously we're not charging anyone, but, but, uh, this is one of those things when people ask, why do we have as much administrative help as we have?
It's one of the things that has to happen.
Yeah, and I would say that.
Our curriculum needs to stay updated and our teachers do a lot of that work and our department just do a lot of that work, but somebody needs to drive the work.
That being said, I will say that Parent Square specifically, um, has minimized it. I mean, they still have to create the, the documents, certainly. But at the push of a button, you're pushing it out as a form which requires a response, and then, then they have the report. So it's not like counting and checking off the boxes. When I was a teacher, I had to go back and like, okay, I got it from Holly, you know. And, and so at least one small thing has been made easier.
Do we have a significant portion of our, um, parent and guardian community who will not accept electronic communications?
Yes, we have some, not a huge amount, but yeah. And so we have alternate methods for the outliers.
Okay.
Does this happen at the other just school districts or is this?
Yes.
So IGE, that was your question, and IHAM was the same question?
Correct.
Because we made those changes again based on the new laws.
Yeah, I wasn't asking to change anything. I was, I just wanted to understand.
Right, so, and first reading for both of those?
And I will just add that, um, we do that at the start of the year for specifically health education. We do it again at the two-week mark to ensure that, um, that we're providing ample notification.
So the two-week mark before any of some of the, the more, the topics that they really want us to do. So you do it in the beginning and then you do it one more time, two weeks before that.
Is this a semester course?
Health is. Health is P R every, every other with P E freshman year. So it's a half-credit course, but it would last all year long.
So you don't have to do it twice a year then?
No, just the ones. Are there any other questions or comments or any feedback you asked?
Just one, I know, like with all the fun, um, policy, and I really do like policy, but I know sometimes we leave things a little open in policy intentionally, but sometimes we leave it, like, so there's really not question. And the only one I had with, um, IHAM is just the second, um, line, just when it says instruction or programming must be appropriate to age level, course of study and development of students. The word like must be appropriate, I just wanted to throw that out there. Uh, we don't need to spend a lot of time on it, but appropriate per who? Like, that's the one that, it leaves it really open. Is it age-appropriate? I might think something's age-appropriate. Holly might say absolutely not, not age-appropriate.
Subjective, it's a subjective word, yeah.
Subjective, and I do like leaving something subjective, but this one makes me a little uncomfortable because, um, I mean, I just see it across our community, whether it's kids watching movies, you know, what's appropriate for an age level.
That's great feedback.
Books that we read. So I just, I'm nervous about that one.
There were state-level instructions on that, what content could be.
Well, we can, if there are, we can put that in there. We can refer to that, like appropriate as per RSA or whatever. So we can, we can be more specific to that, or we can play with that language.
That sounds relatively discretionary.
Yeah, no, I think we need to like tighten that a little bit or have guidance behind that. And it's also, you know, with that, you know, we also do policies so that, you know, when this policy committee moves on or this principal is superintendent, like it's still applicable because what Gina might think is okay, the next person might think is really not. So I don't, I don't like.
That's a good catch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that. Um, okay, so, that being said, the only policy that will be adopted tonight is the first one, which was, um, IKL. And the rest of them are for readings.
I thought you said that had two.
Nope.
One second reading, wave third, and one that was a fourth and adopt.
The first one is a fourth and adopt, and then, then it's second, second reading, no changes. And then, second reading as amended, and then first reading. So there's only one that will be adopted tonight.
And the reason we want to move, just so you know, the reason why we really want to adopt IKL is because we want to publish it in the student handbooks. So we don't have a meeting prior to when that has to happen.
All the second readings that had no changes, legal, more or less legal? I mean, should we do second and adopt if there's no changes?
Some of them, it's been a long time since.
Let's, let's keep them, let's keep them as, just because we're doing it this memo way, we'll try to, we'll, we'll move them to third and adopt, and that'll be fine.
Okay.
But that was a good suggestion too. So, all those in favor, five zero. So then the, um, memo passes. Okay, so I think that concludes our evening meeting. We are going to have a non-public, but I would love to have a report out from the process observer at 8:15.
We are on time.
Five minutes late.
We actually were ahead until we went to the stipend. We got more questions on that than we thought. But, um, other than that, I, I thought both of the presentations were excellent. I really, I'm happy to hear about the advisory. Um, they seem so positive and I think that was, that was a really good presentation to have at the end of the school year. So everything else is on time.
I think those presentations just need a little more time, like allotted to, because they take more and there's more questions.
I think you're right.
They're kind of the coolest part. I mean, to me, that's like where you get more of the feedback because I think that's important.
So, and, um, I think with Gina's, you know, new position on July 1st and becoming our superintendent, I think we will, we've talked a little bit about making sure that we get some nice academic presentations in, um, regularly. So.
Fun stuff.
You know, the, well.
Not going to forget that.
And the conference, that's fun report.
I just, I would like to say thank you for completing this year in, in the dual role of assistant superintendent and superintendent-elect. You have juggled it amazingly well with a great attitude and put us in a really, really positive position for the upcoming year, um, along with your teammates.
Thank you.
Yeah, ditto. So that's great. All right, so we are going to go into non-public and then for the viewing public, we will be adjourning from there. So I need a motion to, um, by a member that the board by roll call go into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91-a3, two A, the dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee, um, which discussed public would likely affect adversely the application of a person other than a member of the body or agency itself.
So moved.
Moved by Beth and seconded by Kate, and I need a roll call.
Tom, I.
Cindy, I.
Holly, I.
Kate, I.
Beth, I.
Okay, so we are in non-public at 8:18.
Okay, so, um, the.